By the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Public comment? Do we have any public comment before we start?
Sign up sheets are down there, I can't see.
No, none of public comment? All right, we'll get right into the new business with Candlewood Fire.
All right, so my presentation doesn't appear to come up on the screen, but that's okay. I'll go through it for you anyway, and I can send it to anyone who needs a copy of it. But we are Candlewood Fire, Brooklyn Volunteer Fire Department, Candlewood Company, 2021 Budget. We first started by touching on our accomplishments for 2019. Thousands of man-hours by 100% volunteer members consisting of fire and rescue emergency response, apparatus and equipment maintenance and upkeep, training, certification, business operations and committee participation, community and vet involvement. We took delivery and placed in the service our new Marine 25 fire rescue boat, designed and ordered a new Engine 21, and refinished our biz. The next two slides are going to be kind of lacking for you guys unless I do this, and maybe this will make it come up. Like that. Sometimes I can figure this out. There is the new Marine 25. I know a lot of you have had the opportunity to go out on it. If anyone else is looking to, just contact me and we can take you out on it. We also refinished our bay floors with capital money from the town. That is the before and after picture of the bay floors. 2021 operating budget. It's in, the overall increase is 1.64%. There are, that's obviously made up of by some increases, increases and decreases within line items. Last year, we had a higher training allotment because we had, I believe it was six new, five new members, five or six new members, all going through Fire One. So that number came down this year somewhat because we don't have that. Medical, physicals was also high last year because in our first year in the physical program, everyone needed to have the EK, no, the chest x-ray, and this year, not everyone has to have it. It depends on your age. Communications has gone up 37.5%, which is really $1,500. And one of the reasons for the communications to go up is because we do have an outdated radio system that we are waiting to work with the town on, with the town project for the radio system, but some of our radios are going to start to die, so they will need to get replaced. As we wait, we do also currently have a grant out for our radios, so if we do get the grant that would give us some cost savings, we won't know until well into this budget cycle. And equipment replacement went up because we are replacing our meters and we're replacing our exhaust fan.
Brian, don't mind if I interrupt.
No, I'd rather you interrupt.
Yeah, I figured as much. So if you get the grant, you're just not going to, you're going to give the money back to the town?
After watching last night's celebration, it seems like that's something to be considered. It was talking about where that money would go back if we didn't spend all our money. It's really an estimate because I don't know if my radios are going to die.
No, no, I get that.
But I need, yeah, it would be a bridge, it would be a bridge we crossed if we got that grant. We could come back and have that discussion. But waiting on a FEMA grant is.
I'm not saying you're expecting it, but if you get the grant, I personally would appreciate if you could have some time for some.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So like I said, the overall increase of 1.64%. Capital requests. I have all our capital requests in that we had submitted to the Board of Selectmen, understanding that some have been cut, but I just wanted to present on them all anyway since this is my opportunity to present to the Board of Finance. So the number one is the continued funding of our apparatus reserve, which is in the budget at $100,000. This does work in our apparatus reserve plan to have money in the town's budget for the next time we go to replace an apparatus. And we do submit to the town each year with our budget what our apparatus replacement plan looks like with our money combined with the town's. The second one, which I know was discussed briefly last night, but I just want to present on it, is the incident command vehicle. It's a mobile office assigned to the chief, provides incident commander with tools to ensure safety of firefighters in public, modern technology for communications, scene and resource management. The vehicle would be outfitted completely as an addition to our fleet at the cost of $85,000. That cost includes everything that goes in, the vehicle as well as everything that goes in it.
That, mine item is $63,000 in capital.
Yeah, our initial submission to the town was $85,000.
Okay.
But it was cut, so I didn't go back to the $63,000.
We should have kept it at 63,000 to show your original request.
Our original request was 85,000.
Really? Okay, we'll look at that. Would we like to track it?
Yeah. And then the other capital request was replace the windows in the firehouse that are over 40 years old. They're insufficient, in some case, non-functioning, and that cost we had estimated at $25,000.
Do you know how many windows that is?
Six in the front, two on the side, eight, 10, about 10 windows.
That's expensive.
There.
$2,500 a window?
That's pretty steep.
That was the estimate we got, but I mean, if it came in less than I would, since the town pays directly for the capital expense, then they would only pay what it costs, so. And then questions?
As far as we went.
Good.
Anybody else have any questions besides the window?
I have something else.
All right. Seeing none, I will let headquarters go.
All yours, Andy.
You.
Thanks, Brian.
Do we need to make a motion to lift them up, move them up, to set our fire?
Oh, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Make a motion, we move to center fire next.
A second.
No offense to the Board of Ed, but.
They're going to be five minutes, 10 minutes, that's all. Figure. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Yes?
Okay. I'll just say. 85 is the kind of the last. They're asking us to pay in 85.
Yeah, and that's what I'm.
So, yeah.
Difference between.
Okay, so you guys are going to pay $12,000 out of your fund.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, Andy.
That was the original plan last year, that wasn't this year.
So you requested 85.
That was what the top of what last year.
All right.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were going to point it at the city.
Sorry, Brian, my other question was, on the equipment replacement in the operating budget, it went up, it went up 13.5%. I was just wondering what, what equipment was being replaced?
One was the exhaust fan, that was a big number, the $20,000, you know, much.
Right. Okay, I was just wondering what, if it was something.
Okay.
What's wrong with budget though?
Yeah, I know. It's still like.
Well, it's not in much of, I'm not showing it yet.
Oh, there we go.
All right. Hello.
My daily. All right, are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Your floor.
Okay, so I'm Sarah Ellis, I'm the secretary and the budget guru for Center Fire Company and the ambulance. So here is our presentation. So just to piggyback, last year, the fire department responded 715 calls, which again, all volunteer, and EMS was 1592. So we're a busy little service here, and just some places we've been over the last year. That accident was Christmas morning on Long Meadow Hill. Doing a lot of car accidents here, and of course, our annual Santa escapades down there at Chick-fil-A is very good to us every year. So our overall request is 354,281, which is about 1.0, almost 1.9%. So overall, what we're looking at, we did reduce training. We do in-house training next door, so we're currently in the midst of a Fire One class. We have two members involved in that. Emergency operations, which funds the storage set that's in the rear of the firehouse and the cell phone, just a reminder, that was cut last year. So we've been paying $132 a month out of our own coffers to cover that expense, as well as the emergency management cell phone. So that we've been carrying this year. Equipment expense, piggyback on Ryan, communications, all of our warranty, all of our equipment's out of warranty, so that $1,000 increase is warranty battery replacements, and so far this year, we spent almost $19,000. Equipment purchase is also included in there. It's a $26 increase over last year, but it was pointed out to us that it was high, so we've spent 27 so far this year. Some of our equipment has shelf life, airbags have to be replaced, and that's a sizable purchase, that's just one of the many things. Our vehicle expense is our next item, it's down $700. We do have to do annual tires and snow chains for apparatus, they're on a cycle every seven years, everything's got to be replaced, and so that's a part of our supply line on there that was questioned. Building and grounds, you know, just basic maintenance of the building. Utilities, we did have an increase in our alarm system cable internet, and we are looking into some of those things. We did alert the town to an electric issue, so I guess under some of our pushing, we're looking at an LED upgrade, right? So thanks to all of that. And our office and administration, also the same idea with the physicals, the chest x-rays required once every five years, and so we could take that number down, in three years, we'll be seeing that go back up as those members who had, who need the five-year repeat will be at the five-year repeat. So, so that's that. Any questions thus far, or, because now I'm going to go into capital, so.
Wait, wait, wait.
Just, just a couple of questions. So for the office and administration is including the physicals, just maybe for accounting for next year on, it's as a personnel expense in, on the Candlewood Fire Department, which might, seems to make a little more sense, and office administration is a different line, and I don't know if we can have those as the same.
We put it.
They use the same chart of accounts, and this year, sent, last year, Candlewood changed to use Centers Fire of accounts, chart of accounts. This year, Center changed their chart of accounts, that's why they're different.
Okay.
There's only so much that I want to aggravate them.
Gotcha.
That was not a hill to die on.
So try to get it next year, to be the same.
Yeah, yeah, next year.
Just so it's easier.
Okay. It is listed as personnel under office and administration, but.
On that same topic, though, I know there's been communication and challenges on getting the budgeting all tied up and in correct format and stuff. How is, how is that going, and are we, are we comfortable that, that we're moving in the right direction there? Asking both fire companies and Marcia and Steve on that.
I think it's going very well. You know, the fire company has been very, very cooperative and worked with us directly, and I think we've gotten a much better budget because of all the work you guys have done.
Just, you know, it's a lot of extra hours for us to get all straightened out, so hopefully next year it won't be, you know.
Next year it should just flow really easily.
Next year, it's not like the 60 hours we've put into it this year, so hopefully. So, any other questions?
Well, we have the summary changes. Mark, anybody?
Yes. Oh, good, can I go to capital? Okay, I'm sorry.
We went through a lot of yours last night because of the changes that the selectmen gave us, so.
Okay, so a lot of.
We had a lot of conversation.
Perfect, okay. Okay. In terms of capital, our apparatus is put in from what we receive back from the town at the point that they're to be, so we're assuming that you're funding that when the time comes. So right now, what we have in there for our capital expenses are the asphalt paving to the rear of the building, which is our drill pad, which is starting to crumble, a remodel of our restrooms in the, in the building, brick resealing, and the rescue boat moved back again. So just some information, you're more than welcome to stop by, or if you've been there for Kids Day, you know that we do all of our drilling out back. It's 20 or 25 years old at this point, it's original, starting to crack, peel, and become unsafe, so it's just, we need to get that repaired, or replaced. In terms of the restrooms, we have handicapped accessible restrooms there, again, the building's original, so it's all original, so we just need to do some cleaning up, you know, maybe update the color a little bit, because that's a personal preference. But both of our restrooms do have shower facilities, largely for our members in the event of an emergency, but it's just, they're, they're tired, they need some, some help. Update the flooring, fixtures, all that kind of great stuff.
Can you remind me how much you have in there for the bathroom upgrade?
I believe it was 40.
Thank you.
Forty, I don't have it written.
Yep.
Sounds great, I just was trying to remember.
That's fine. So that's that, good with fire?
Yep.
Move right along.
Just for clarifications, and Andy and everybody, we went through your, this, last night, we got a summary of the changes that were made, so I don't want you to think we're glossing it over, but we went through discussion last night over the fire department.
Exactly.
So I just.
We're good with that.
I do have a question, again, to Steve and Marcia about the presentation on the budget Excel, about, there is, there's the refurbished aerial apparatus and then the negative offset for the same amount for funded out of reserve, same thing for the ambulance, I'm not sure exactly what that is.
Those that already happened this year, they were in the original budget request, and then they happened before now, and so we paid for them with some reserves and things, so that's why, and they should be in purple to show that.
Yep. So they were putting, they were put in the request even though they were already taken care of?
I want to tie out for the request.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
In terms of our EMS, so this is a sizable increase largely due to staffing. We're now staffing two ambulance, two ALS ambulances, which means there's an EMT and a paramedic on two ambulances from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM every day, Sunday to Saturday, an additional paramedic rides, you know, another 24 hours, and then we have a EMT from 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and then a volunteer overnight. So that accounts for that increase of 9% to our ambulance personnel. In terms of training, we do have a new online program starting, it's statewide, we all know how well state planning goes, and so we're trying to kind of, they're trying to figure out what they want us to do, you know, yesterday, so the training is going up. EMS operations, there's obviously an increase in calls, so there's an increase in volume of the materials that we're using. An example, this coronavirus, we had to go out and buy eight masks, a thousand dollars apiece the other night, Eric, right?
Working on getting them.
Working on getting them, so it's tough to get them, so it's $8,000 to get those eight masks that we need to have to protect our, our people. Office and administration, it's, insurance is driving that number. We are expecting an increase in the billing revenue, and so that's our offset. So we did come to you last year and said, next year, it will be a million-dollar operation, and true to our word, it's a million-dollar operation to run the ambulance service in Brookfield. Questions on that one?
The, the increased staffing for the ambulance, first time, I might have missed it, but first time hearing of it, so is that because of increase in, what, why, what's the source of the need for that?
We have a increase in call volume, and we are now covering 100% of first and second calls.
Yep.
So we both increased the, the amount of staff we have, so we used to have one ambulance, you know, seven days a week, and then second ambulance, we went from having, you know, a second medic, and then volunteer EMTs, to having a second ambulance weekdays, to now having a second ambulance seven days a week. So we have more ambulance staffed, and we also, there's a small increase in the hourly rate of the EMTs of like, you know, and paramedics.
We also shared the ambulances with the Milford, and it just got, both services got too busy, and it just, it had stopped because it was just too busy.
Not arguing that, I'm just wondering if there's standards of practice or ratios or anything like that, that can support that?
I'm confident that we'll be back here in a couple of years, and that you're going to have a 30.
I don't doubt that either, but.
It's on that, I just wanted you guys all to plan for that, because it's going to happen. We're putting another nursing home in, and extended care facilities, and these doctors' offices that are getting built, just driving the service up. And quite frequently, they're back-to-back calls where they happen 10 minutes apart, so for an hour, we have no ambulances in town, we just kind of do this, and we rely on volunteer to call that third call, and that's what happens.
Yep. But, I don't doubt any of that, Andy, but what, what metrics are used to support the staffing? I'm just, I'm just looking to understand more than challenge.
Basically, when we, we can see in our, in our call line, when we aren't covering the calls, and we have to call mutual aid from Danbury, and as that number rises, that's when we know that we have to, and basically what happened was, on some weekends, we had some, we had a Sunday, and then that struggle with the candle back, we had nine, nine times Danbury came in here while we were at another call, and it was, that's why I came and saw Steve, I said, Monday morning, we need to put Stan, this, right, we've got to do. And it's just, it's just, we won't look at numbers, and it's just, the problem is, it's unpredictable, it's not like I can tell you, all right, Tuesday's been, it's all over again. But basically, our, relying on mutual aid, other services to come in to cover us, and people have known it a long time for ambulances, is what drives it.
Okay.
And then right now, I feel comfortable, we're, we're, we're good, you know, in a short amount of time, we might increase it 12 hours a day, that second ambulance, instead of eight to six, be eight to eight, you know, we, we look at the numbers, the ambulance captain's a good job at that, and right now, I feel good, but it's, it's still trending up. That nursing home opens, we're going to be in trouble.
Yep, okay. Thanks, I'm not going to believe it, but I might have some follow-up data requests that I'll pass through Glenn, just to support. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Um, oops, sorry. Different, that's cool. Just in case you haven't seen us out and about, which I'm sure everybody has, I'm sorry, they're old because there's snow, and we didn't have any of that this year, but nobody, you know, just, you know, our training, they're out, you know, our, our big red billboards, so they're out and about, they do respond to fires and everything as a support for us, and I know they're going out to the Penguin Plunge if that's still going, I don't know if that's something that's been canceled.
That model will kill everything.
Yeah, you know, yeah, that, the lake will, the lake will kill it probably. The one EMS capital request, other than the ambulance replacement, is for additional AEDs, so that all of our members, our fire apparatus in our firehouses have AEDs, and so this is what we're looking for, to have more of these, or, we do have some older models that we still are working on getting out, and so now, again, just more, there's a better survival rate if you have an AED immediately available, or as, and all of our police officers and everybody carry them as well.
So I think last year, you partially fulfilled that, we didn't fully, we, we gave a certain number. Do you know what the request was last year, was it also 15?
I think we asked for 15, but we only got 10. Looking at Eric, do you remember? Seven?
I think $15,000 was.
I don't think it was that much. I don't remember what the final approval number was.
Yeah, so last year, we had some, and we just got the new people, and we just replaced that order for the new ones, the new people certified. Next year, we have more people, we're expecting to get certified, and then we have an older model of Life Pac 500, which is pretty much end-of-life, not currently, but next year they're expecting it to be, and that's what sits on all our fire trucks, so we'll want to put the newer Life Pac 1000 on the fire truck and face the Life Pac 500.
Another issue we had, we encountered is Danbury Ambulance Service, which is a private company, wellness, she fights sick, it's been sold from New Vans, the hospital thing, and they're not really doing the backup like they used to do, the blister reliance, that was another driver in our, increasing our staffing, because we don't have that layer to protect anymore to help, you know, protect our quality.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Were we paying them for backup? How did that work? Was it shared?
Per call, per call, per call you covered.
But we pay them full price.
We pay them full price, and we have to settle, it costs a lot of money to do that, because we have to take our insurance for it, we get, we're paid it all.
Yep.
So along the lines of the metrics that, you know, Dan mentioned, possible metrics later on, can you provide us later on with like the increased number of calls that we had, and I'd like to see how that relates to any increase in revenue?
Sure. The issue with the revenue is always based on insurance and when insurance pays.
Right.
Our current biller is better about waiting until the person, the insurance gets the hospital bill before they get our bill, because that way, our bill's more likely to be paid.
Yep.
So, but we do, we've definitely seen collections go up since we started working with them a few years ago, so.
Well, we're still losing money on every call.
You lose money on every call. Doesn't matter how you slice it.
If we had 100%, we'd be profitable.
Yeah, we wouldn't be here.
We wouldn't be here.
We'd be giving you money.
Yeah. But our collection rate is very good compared to other towns, but it's not 100% by far.
Thank you.
Anything else on that one? Otherwise, we just wanted to let you know, we did take a cut last year, but we did need, and we purchased out of our, the money that we raise through Fund Drive and through investments, so we bought some stuff. So one thing we bought was hydraulic tools, I'll show you some pictures in a minute, they're, instead of being hydraulic jaws of life, they're run by batteries, so they're a little bit more portable, but at the cost of almost $36,000. We also purchased thermal imaging cameras for all of our officers, so now they have them in their personal vehicles, so they can fix, assess, oh, sorry, address the situation before, I can't talk, I'm sorry, tired. We also bought a whole lot of battery-operated tools, again, to outfit the trucks and the apparatus. We had to do an alarm system upgrade, if you haven't, we're always aware of it, but a lot of fire departments in the area, especially New York State out on Long Island, have had fires in their firehouses and no fire alarm to tell them that there's a fire in their firehouse, so we were proactive on that. And we also gave $25,000 towards the purchase of our new ambulance that's in production, and hopefully will be here summer, hopefully. So these are hydraulic tools that we purchased, our thermal imaging camera, our TICs, very small, the first ones that we bought 25 years ago, 20 years ago, were probably $25,000 themselves, and just our battery-operated tools that we bought. And with that, everybody in action, any questions? How about you?
Good, done, Aaron?
Good.
All right, thank you.
Good, okay, awesome.
Thank you, Sarah.
Do you need this saved onto the flash, onto the desktop?
No, can you just send it for our records?
I could do that.
Anything else y'all want to add from the fire? All right, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming down.
Fifteen minutes.
The boys were just like, when are you going to be home?
Seventy hours, fifteen minutes.
Yeah, well, that's, like I said, it takes, people don't realize.
Hey, guys and gals, I do want to appreciate all of you showing up, showing support for your fire departments, it's really good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
And my heart's just. I emptied a whole camp.
I am not a germaphobe.
Thanks, Andy, thank you, Andy.
You're a natural, sir.
Carrie, see you guys. All right. Onto education. Sure.
Can we email it, please, to your manager? Not yet.
Thank you very much.
Can you guys, can you use another sheet?
It's been good.
Extra.
Thank you for coming.
So, I think we'll first start with the current year's special education overage.
So we'll start with the current school budget overage. What you'll see on this first initial page here, we're still looking at a very sizable overage, slightly down from last month, but we still have that major overhanging issue. We are pushing extremely hard to scrub the budget, make sure we find every single savings we possibly can from this budget. I'll remind you that we froze nearly $270,000, and we do have, which we can give more information on, the student activity funds, which we've identified about $52,000 that we can use from there. That's not sort of a recurring savings that we can recuperate each year, but that is something that we can do this year. In terms of scrubbing or exercising all other areas of the budget, slightly up from last month, not too much, I can go through those numbers in a little bit. Assuming the support that we have previously discussed from the non-lapsing account, as well as the budget transfer of the 208 that's. as well as the budget transfer of the 208 that the board of selectmen approved, um, we're still looking at around eighty-seven thousand dollars, forty of which is pending, but we are getting closer on that number as.
Before you go though, not anything bad, since we voted this down, it's truly not pending right now.
Okay.
Just, I think you got to go back through the board of selectmen to make a reappropriation, or am I wrong? We voted this down at a meeting.
No, I understand, I understand you voted it down.
Right, so how does it come back?
Board of Selectmen has to reappropriate it and send it to you.
That's what I'm saying, so it's truly not pending right now.
Our request still stands, that nothing is.
All right, I just wanted to be aware, as of now, it's not really truly pending.
Okay.
It's, so to bring it to life, it has to be pending.
Okay.
So.
Um, so then the still left unresolved is around eighty-seven thousand, again, of forty of which is still an unknown factor, is we still have two students left that are still undergoing evaluations. If you take, yes.
So forty-seven is absolute right now, and forty is unknown?
That's correct.
Okay.
So if you take a look at the next page, I gave you sort of a side-by-side of the figures that we went over last month. Um, you'll see that the outplacement tuition number is climbing. That is the number that we had expected to climb as some of those students that were finishing their evaluations. We have firm numbers on those, so that, that number is accurate to date. Professional services stayed roughly the same. Uh, we do have an increase in special education transportation for the same amount, or for the same reason. We are anticipating a decrease of around eleven thousand dollars in our special education excess cost grant. This is mostly driven by the fact that although we have a large number of students that are outplaced, not all of them qualify for excess cost reimbursement from the state. So that's a really important factor to, um, understand. And in our efforts to bring some of those costs down in-house, sometimes that drops them below the threshold that qualifies us for state reimbursement.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What would determine whether a cost would be eligible for the state?
It's determined, it's, it's determined mostly by the student's overall cost, and then we are reimbursed at about seventy-two percent.
Are you saying the cost for some of these students is under the four-and-a-half times our average?
That's exactly right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Four-and-a-half times our average is.
Is still.
Eighty, it's over seventy thousand dollars. So you have, you don't get anything until you're over seventy thousand.
Yeah.
And you'll see that.
Yep.
Um, so I have outlined there, the, you'll see the number has dropped from last month, where we had four students that were still undergoing evaluations, now we are down to two. So that number is a little more solid in terms of that number that's still potentially hanging out there. Um, but we are looking at around nine-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars in terms of our overage.
Can I ask one more question on that?
Yes.
So these costs on this page, where you've added students, these are fully loaded costs for the year?
Yes.
For this year.
What do you mean by fully loaded?
Well, if it says it's a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, I assume that's a yearly cost?
That, no, that's the actual spending for whatever the part-year or full-year would be.
Uh-huh. So we're saying, let's say student thirty-nine is thirty-five thousand, and that's one of the ones you recently identified, I think, right, with six students altogether?
That's partially your cost.
So you're saying that is a three-month cost?
It might be a five, six-month cost.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
It's crazy.
Yep.
Some of the costs of these are outrageously high.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, you can.
Since we're kind of on this page.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any feeling that the, maybe movement, for lack of a better term, to get the state to cover more special education costs is going to gain any traction? Because, right, in local areas, it can bankrupt towns, or seriously harm towns, which we're noticing. Um, but on a statewide level, it's pretty steady, so.
Yeah, on a statewide level, on a statewide level, education, special education funding is actually relatively stable. It's, it's in the local districts where it is very volatile.
Right, it's not kids moving from out of state into Connecticut, they're moving around Connecticut to.
Right, right, and it swings local budgets tremendously. So, um, I, I haven't seen any traction in terms of that number moving. I have, there is a bill that will be, that will be reaching, you know, legislators that. Yeah, that will potentially, um, it's a cost-sharing cooperative.
Right.
But it works pretty much the same way that the excess cost grant does, which if any town has any sort of wealth, we probably would benefit.
Can I, can I just discuss that a little bit? So this bill allows for the creation of an entity that would act similarly to an insurance company. We pay our bills for our cars, and Glenn racks his car up and we all fix it.
Yep.
There are two problems I have with it. One, they haven't told us what the cost is going to be to Brookfield. And two, the formula, they're not going to do, hey, your costs are two million, we guarantee we pay two million, you put in two million.
Right.
They're, we put in two million, they come up with some formula, some gnome in the basement.
Anytime there's a formula at this point.
And it doesn't help Brookfield. And I know a lot of people in Brookfield support this. I support the idea, but one, we need to know the numbers, and we need to know the formula, or we could be spending a lot more money than we are now for less service. I know Steve Harding's been asking a lot of questions on that, he's not getting any answers. He's getting zero answers back. Steve and I have talked about three times, four times on this.
As have Steve and I, it's, there are no answers at this point.
Yeah.
How can you say yes if you don't know the?
Rosa, how many students, including the two that are potentially pending, how many students is that total?
So that is thirty-five in total. If you could look on this additional supplement sheet, which is the tuition reconciliation. We had budgeted originally for twenty-six, and we have, we had six students, um, basically not up until this point. So they, they didn't start the school year essentially. But at the same time that those kids are moving out, we have twelve moving in, and then we have changes for the current students that we do have mid-year. So it's a highly fluctuating number. But thirty-five is what we have today.
And do you know that all those thirty-five will require services, again, I know some kids age out.
Yeah.
Do we have any that will?
We do, we will address that when we talk about, I wanted to address this.
Understandable, yeah.
Yeah, yep. Um, the last chart that we have there, um, just summarizes our special education budget exposures in terms of the tuition, the, sorry. Okay, so our projected overruns for special education that was detailed on the previous slide, we're looking at February here, nine-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand. Now, within the course of our normal budget management, um, we are overrunning other various accounts, around two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, that's fairly normal and manageable within a typical budget cycle, because there are really underruns in some other accounts, around three-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars. So what those are mostly driven by, we've added in the notes section, so you can see those primary drivers. Most notably, in terms of the leave and vacancies, the update from last month, we've had three more teachers that have gone out on leave. So we will capture that increase in savings, and that will be detailed on the following slide. But, um, we are netting out to around a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars in savings through the other accounts.
So Rosa, on the, the drivers there, they add up to a very small amount, so there's a lot of five and ten thousand dollar items that make up both.
No, no, those are just the change month-to-month.
Oh, okay.
Those are, so, and they add up close to the total difference, that's what changed. I, if you want, I've got a sheet, I can give you all the total numbers.
That'd be helpful.
Okay.
Thanks, Mel.
And you'll also see, I, I think, I think Glenn probably forwarded you the February financial report, so that'll have it.
True.
Um, so our net normal budgetary, we're looking at about a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars so far of an overall underrun in those other accounts. Um, as I mentioned, we have done a lot of work in terms of freezing nearly two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. The fifty-two thousand from the student activities fund that I had mentioned, um, this is from old funds in that account that should have been closed out years ago, um, but they have been sitting sort of dormant in that account. And we can capture those as sort of a one-time savings, but again, it's not a recurring account savings. I did, again, mention the non-lapsing fund and the appropriation that we will have to readdress, um, bringing us to that eighty-seven thousand dollar number.
But out of that eighty-seven, forty K is still under.
Yes.
That includes that forty K, just to be clear. Can I ask a question, since you keep talking about this district-wide spending freeze?
Yeah.
Uh, this program or company that, um, runs the substitute teachers now, ESS, that was hired, I'm appearing to be in January. So is there a saving somewhere? Because you're in a spending freeze, and we've been operating for however many years with in-house people, administrators, I'm assuming, take care of the substitutes.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming there's a cost to have a company come in and do this. What is that cost? What was the process of hiring them? Where in the budget did that come from? Where is it showing next year? I don't, I don't see any of that.
So it's still in the substit-, it'll still be in the substitutes line. The decision to move to that service was more strategic, so that we could have our HR personnel working on various tasks that they are currently not able to work on, because they are inundated with the management of our substitutes, which was not always an ideal situation. We do have an incre-, we had an incredible difficulty finding subs for some of, for some of the coverage that we needed. So this was sort of more of a, of a twofold, more strategic move in terms of what would be better for the services we can provide our students. Um, how it nets out to a fairly budget-neutral move is something I can detail for you.
Be very interested in hearing that.
Yeah, but again, it was.
Because I keep hearing you're in a spending freeze. And this two-sixty-eight, two-sixty-one is the maximum, that's been steady through the last few months.
Well, that was, the decision to move to the service was a discussion that was had by the board prior to this school year starting.
Right, and it should be cost-neutral, because we do pay a premium on the rates that they pay the substitutes, but they pay a lower rate for long-term substitutes than we do. So that savings washes out the premium we pay for the regular daily substitutes.
Do you have any supporting documents on that that you could send to us, or supporting numbers on it?
We did analyze it from the prior year's substitution.
Yeah, okay. Can I ask one more question?
Yes, you can.
How many substitutes a day, do we, are we averaging? Is that a, is that a? Like.
The analysis will show that, though.
Yep.
How much total of the spend, the salaries? I, I see the forty-eight thousand, but that's just month-to-month. How much total of that is salaries? And again, I've just been on the board for a month now, so I'm catching up, so.
Do you mean how much are we under on just the salary line?
Yeah, I've had two, three-sixty-seven, oh, sixty-three, how much of that is just salaries versus transportation?
I've got it here, I've got it here. So we're a hundred-and-sixty thousand under on teacher salaries. We're thirty-five thousand under on nurses' salaries, and sixty-five thousand under on custodians. And that's offset by an overrun on, on substitutes, of about fifty thousand.
Sorry, can you give me those numbers again?
One-hundred-and-sixty under on teachers.
One-sixty.
Sorry, go ahead, Bob.
One-hundred-and-sixty thousand on teachers, thirty-five thousand on nurses, sixty-five thousand on custodians. And we'll show you that on the next chart, and running over about fifty thousand on substitutes.
And this is also in the February financial report as well.
And those are related, by the way, the underruns usually drive substitute costs. So, um, we'll show you that on the next chart.
One, one more thing. I'm just, I guess I'm puzzled. I, I'm really interested to hear how we got, to see the documents, how we got this cost-neutral. Because when I went on the ESS website, uh, in their FAQ section, people, someone, the question was, is there a cost savings? And their answer was, the only way there was a cost savings was if you were able to get rid of administrators. And we haven't gotten rid of anyone that does scheduling of, and they actually even spoke to it, it was going to, if you had to be more than one person you were getting rid of to, to make it.
No, 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 definitely, we definitely, we didn't get rid of any administrators handling our subsystem. The whole, the point was that, so that that person could, instead of focusing her entire job on managing the substitutes, could actually do her work in HR as she was meant to.
So, so Mark, to answer your question, because Ken just said it, is, we did have an added cost on a per-substitute basis, but we do use a lot of long-term subs, and their ability to get long-term subs at lower rates is much better than ours, because they have a much bigger base. So what we're doing is we're saving money on the long-term subs and paying a premium on the short-term subs.
So the long, if I'm understanding you, the long-term subs that we work in were parents or from our district most likely, or very close by?
No, no, they're from all over, they're from all over.
Yeah, they have to be certified.
Yeah, so, so the difference between a short-term sub and a long-term sub, Mark, is that a short-term sub, we have a fixed rate per day for a substitute. A long-term sub, when they come in and that they are there for a certain amount of time, you have to pay them a level-one bachelor's pay. So the, the, the firm is able to bring in the long-term subs on a broader base, because it's an independent firm, and we have to deal with Brookfield and the Fairfield County rates. So that's the fundamental difference, and that's the analysis we looked at.
ESS's team is not doing a job, because that should be on their front page, hey, we can, we can be cost-neutral for you. I mean, that'd be a reason for everybody to go after us.
Anybody who's in a, in Fairfield County, probably.
Yeah. Is that a, the long-term sub analysis, was that a pro forma analysis, or is that turning out to be actual? Just start. Yeah, it's all.
February twenty-fourth.
It was pro forma, it was pro forma.
It was pro forma, okay.
It was pro forma.
But I still want to, I'm looking forward to seeing that, so I can talk about this, thanks.
So then the last, um, chart that we have for you is, is something that was sent along with the February financials, but details each leave and vacancy that we currently have. And you'll see that the three that have been, that are new leaves since we last gave you this update are detailed there with words in the next.
So what Ken does in his projections, because we spent a healthy amount of time on this, is he's constantly looking at the leaves of absence and the vacancies we're having. The difference between the two is the, mostly teachers who go on a leave of absence for whatever reason it is, um, they go on an unpaid leave for a period of time, and then they often opt for, I'm sorry, they go on a paid leave and then often opt for an unpaid leave, um, after they run out of paid leave time. Those teachers are scheduled to come back on a certain date, we know what that date is, we can project that. The second category, which is vacancies, you see it's mostly not teachers. Uh, these are people who have resigned from their position, and we are interviewing and trying to fill those positions. Um, and, uh, we've had an interesting time with custodians this year. Um, and you actually see the BHS head custodian twice there, because we had a vacancy at the end of September. We hired someone on by the beginning of December, and they quit three weeks later. So, uh, so we're, we've had an interesting time with some of the custodial positions. Um, and we continue to try to fill those. So quite frankly, we would love to fill the BHS head custodian on three-twenty-seven, and that's what's in our forecast. If we don't fill it, there will be a further underrun in this line, right?
I mean, would you have to contract?
But we have substitutes, in the substitutes, we actually hire temporary, is in the substitutes line where we hire the temporary custodians, or does it go into the salary line?
It goes in the salary, and I don't have anybody.
Right, yeah, so we've been, it's a really tough time to be light on custodians, I mean, to be frank, so.
Especially at this particular.
Yeah, so, so we are not, we manage this, the third bucket, which isn't on this chart, is we have significant turnover at the, in the summer months, you know, when teachers say, I'm not coming back, and then we hire, it's a higher turnover. You see that in the budget, that's what that line is for. We don't know who those teachers will be, but, so we budget on a placeholder every year that we will, uh, we will lose some, we'll have some number of teachers lost to retirement, and they will be replaced with some mid-career or starting career people.
So can I ask a question on that?
So that's a bud-, that's a budgeting item. We actually came in right on our projection this last year. Um, and I think it's three thousand dollars different is what's in our budget reports versus what we had projec-, we had guessed that.
Yeah.
Uh, we're not hearing a lot about pending retirements for the upcoming year. Uh, we, Ken told me the other day, he's heard of none. So we have a placeholder in our budget, but at this point, it's not substantiated with specific data that we might.
Because historically, the prior, prior three years, your savings was a hundred-and-fifty thousand per year. So I was wondering how you picked the number eighty thousand, because historically, you've saved more than you have in your budget for that.
But we've saved it across all three categories. Not just that one line item, the, the, we've actually, we hit one year, Glenn will remember this year vividly, where we hit close to four hundred thousand dollars on the, on the turnover. And God bless that we did that year, because we used that underrun to cover the special ed hit that year. But, but these sorts of things that happen day-to-day are--
I'm not, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about teacher turnover. If your average has been a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, why would you budget eighty?
Wha, where do you get the one fifty thousand a year?
We went back over the numbers you provided us.
Do we pub, do we report actuals on the teacher turnover?
On the questions, yes.
That's what's in your budget for the past three years.
I know, we've been bud, we've been budgeting eighty, eighty, eighty. And then last year, we, because we got squeezed with budget cuts, we--
I'm using the numbers you provided to us when you responded to our questions.
Okay.
I, I think that number's varied a few years. I mean, they had, they had the buyout five years ago, where they had--
And that was a huge--
Or six years ago, they had the buyout. The following year, you had more than you planned on, four hundred thousand. Last year, you had more than the eighty. Because two years ago, you had more than the eighty. This year, you came in at one twenty-three out of the one twenty.
That's right.
This year was one twenty-three.
And interestingly enough, I'll just tell you one other tidbit. What we're seeing here on leaves of absence is directly related to what happened those couple of years ago. We had a lot of retirements, we hired a lot of younger people in. There's a lot of maternity leaves going on, um, at this point. So it happened, it happens, it's what happens--
Unintended consequences.
And it's unintended consequences. So that's what actually drives a lot of this, that we're looking at on the screen.
But this drives every year, that's something that I was looking at. If you really take your salary to budget to actuals--
Yep.
I think from prior years, that salary line is six hundred thousand less, two fifty-five less, seven twenty-two less, four fifty-five less. And this year, we're at one sixty-something and counting. So typically, that line there, this line always returns, the salary line, always returns three to four hundred thousand dollars a year from budget to actual. I, I asked for an analysis thought, I did mine. I went through and went through every budget that you guys have put forth, I took the number, and then you took your actuals off of here. And like I say, seven twenty-two, one year on that salary line differential from budget to actual.
I remember that, yeah.
Six, six twenty-something in one year, two thirty-three was the lowest you've ever gone on the salary line. And that's probably, you'll be a little higher this year, maybe. But that's where it's at. On that salary line, typically, though, historical trends for the past five years show an average of five hundred thousand differential between budget and spend. And I asked to get those numbers, I'd like to see those numbers, because I'm getting off the budget. So I'm not saying I'm perfect, let me be clear. I took it off your website, the actual budgeted amount.
No, that's a good que, it's a good question.
And then I went to your actuals, because in your book, you gave us the actual spends. And the numbers I got were significantly, like, seven hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. So typically, I get what you do, you have to front-load the hundred percent of your salaries. I get that on the front end. But typically, somewhere in the, the course of the year, through all of these different moving pieces that you have, and you have a lot of them, nobody's gonna argue, you know the law. Typically, though, on that line, we're three hundred thousand dollars on average, less. And also, on your, if you did a study on your actual turnover, I think typically, you've always been more. This year, you were the closest, that in your last five years.
I would say this year, from, at least my experience on the board, this year, we've been the closest.
I'm not gonna argue that, I think you were the-- But I do think you put in eighty this year, right? And I know you're saying you haven't heard it, but typically, they don't come out until, because if you follow your meeting minutes, it's now March--
We don't, we don't hear from teachers until May, right? That's why they have--
March is your earliest, you get a few of the--
No, usually, the declaration is in May.
So--
May?
You would've known about--
Usually, I mean, I ask the principals to check with their staff, to see if anybody's thinking about it. And by now, I've heard of this one, this one's thinking about it, and stuff like that.
But if you look at your matrix, your true matrix that drives this too, forty-two percent of your teachers are step masters, step thirteen, five and above. So you gotta have a lot of people aging out, just by the stature of your matrix. Your matrix says forty-two percent of your teachers are at step thirteen point five and above. So you're over the top on mature teachers.
Yeah, there's a lot of them in that one, one, the penultimate step, who are waiting to get that top, uh, step before they retire. In our last, uh, budget, in our last teacher negotiations, we stretched that out three years, so, before they get there. So, it's a--
So forty percent of your teaching?
Yeah, we'd actually have a lower-than-normal at the top step. We have a lot at the second to top step.
Yeah, thirteen-five to the, what is it, fifteen, they're all in there, you have--
I'll have to--
Forty-five and one, forty-seven.
I'll give you some insights on that.
All right.
So, I mean, this is identical to what we were talking with Chief Purcell last night, where, you know, he, he, he budgets to a hundred percent staffing and a hundred percent everything, but knows based upon his history that there's going to be, you know, leaves or, or other things that are, he doesn't know where they're going to come from. So he accepted this year of one percent, approximately one percent of his budget as a quote-unquote negative contingency, knowing that if everything happened as budgeted, he would have to use that contingency, and that, or would have to come, come get it. But was comfortable budgeting with that taken out of his budget, based upon his twenty years of providing new budgets to the town. So, that, that's kind of what we're referring to here.
The only problem with that is that if we run into a special education issue like we have every single year, we're coming to you in October with a five hundred thousand dollar ask, instead of a hundred thousand dollar ask.
All right.
So--
Yeah, but it's a budget, right? It's easier to ask for money later.
It's itemized, yeah. I know, I get it.
If something unforeseen like that happens, then we expect you guys to come to us. We, we wouldn't want you to say, oh, we're having a spending freeze on teachers. We, we don't, we want you to plan according to what, what is known, what's, what's on paper. If some crazy thing happens, if another macro burst happens, you know, we're not gonna stick money in the town budget to make sure that, hey, in case this happens, we have it in there. So, the, the purpose of what we're trying to get at is to get to the best possible flat, not flat, excuse me, but the best possible number for, for what the actual budget will be. Obviously, there's gonna be some give and take, but we know every single year, there is a history, there always being extra money in the salary, and yes--
That's used to offset our--
Correct. But that's the difference to your budget, and that's, in fairness, that's a difference to your budget. When we give you the money, it can't be clawed back, it can't be done anything. When the town side gets the money, we have to approve it being spent or moved. When it comes to you, it can be spent anywhere without any, I mean, without your, with your guidance, without the town's guidance. So what we're saying is, if we brought that number down on the negative contingency, it'd be less of a tax increase on the town side, overall. And still, you would be supported, because we understand what you're doing. When we give it to you now, it could be spent anywhere. I guess, like, just like the teacher, that you came to us in a special appropriation. You gave you eighty-five, you spent fifty-two or fifteen thousand savings, which made you to the one twenty-three, because that was the last person to get you to the one twenty-three. That money, twenty percent of that money went to another cause from what we gave it for. So, it's, I, I, I didn't say it was a negative cause, whoa, whoa, didn't say negative. What we're saying is, we're trying to get to the line items being more correctly, so we can support each line item. Not, we give you this amount of money here, this amount of money there, wherever it ends up, you spend it. Nobody's stealing the money, nobody's accusing the board of that of stealing money, or, or throwing it down the toilet, nobody's accusing that.
Well, you just about did, Glenn.
I didn't accuse that, no.
With respect, with respect.
No, Bob.
You, you gave the standard old speech that, we have no control, and you can spend it on whatever you want. And that's, that is not quite fair, because we've given money back each and every year, and we've taken a risk against our budget. I think what you're advocating for is take a bigger risk, right? And we'll put some cover, we'll put some coverage at--
What I'm, no, what I'm saying is, advocate a budget that we think can pass through the town, that the town can support, that we can all get behind, and support you on the backside, like with this two oh eight. We're here, we're here to support you. We're not here to tear you down, we're just here to get the numbers right, so we can all understand them.
Well, but we wouldn't be here for two oh eight if you did what you proposed. We'd be here for, we'd be here for, let's look at the chart. We'd be here asking you for, um, the two oh eight, plus the eighty-seven, plus, uh, the two hundred thousand dollars to salary underruns that we didn't have budgeted. So that would've been five hundred thousand dollars, we would've been--
No, you'd be coming to us--
What you're telling us, or what I'm hearing, is that you're, in effect, padding other lines--
We're not, we're not padding anything, Mark.
It's not padding, we're funding our contractual obligations. Funding our contractual obligations and not padding the budget.
No, no, it's good.
So, so Mark, Mark, we build a budget very simply. We say, here's the staff we have--
It's not a simple budget, Bob.
Uh, it's not a simple budget, but we do, from a salary line, it is a straightforward budget. We say, here's the list of staff, and here's the salary we've agreed to pay for them, and we're signing contracts with those people. We're building a budget. Five years ago, um, when I first got involved in the Board of Education, first thing I said to Ken's predecessor was, we have underruns, right? We have to start putting in for this teacher turnover, we have to put in a bet on the come, we're gonna have an underrun, right? And we did that. That's what this eighty to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that's been in every single budget, is betting on the come, because we don't know who's gonna be turning over, um, some amount of underrun on that salary line. What I'm here, here at, being advocated is, make that a bigger number, right? And that's okay, that's a good discussion. That's different than padding a budget, Mark, it really is. It's a betting-on-the-come question.
You're right, it was a bad term to use.
I react to terms, so.
Right, you reacted to Glenn, I reacted to you.
Okay, where, where, that's fine.
The point is, and it's not just the salary line, there are many, many line items that you have, that you're pulling money from, and it just, it muddies, on our end, and your end, maybe the budget is crystal clear. On my end, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the board, the Board of Education's budget always looks--
And we, I, I cannot stress enough how hard we are working to get you the answers that you guys keep asking us, and we keep providing as much information as you're asking. But you are looking at tiny slivers that are a few thousand dollars here or there, that are budgetary underruns that come out, to about what we give back to the town every single year. Meanwhile, when we are sounding this million-dollar alarm, you're like, oh no, we don't have a problem with that number. So, that's the number that we need to continue to focus on, because that is the real problem.
I think there's a misunderstanding of what the issue is here. We, we totally get that you're trying to solve this issue with the, the million-dollar problem here. No one's denying that. And no one here would ever shoo you away from that issue. That's not the problem here. But when we see these underruns every single year, three hundred thousand dollars, being pulled for these types of emergencies, we're wondering, hold on, let me finish, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be reasonable here. What we're trying to do is say, well, why are we budgeting for these? It seems like there's always some sort of leeway there, that we can always put to mend those types of fences, rather than, when you need the help, that's when you're supposed to come to the board to get that help, and you will get that help for these kinds of issues with the special ed. What we're trying to get to is what we consider to be a, a correct, right, exact budget, based on what the numbers will be in a perfect world. We understand that doesn't happen, and this is why we have other measures in place to help out with those situations. We don't want you to have to pull from desks, and books, and libraries, and, and those kinds of things every single year. But, you know, last year, three hundred thousand dollars was cut from the budget, and you guys went to your meeting, and you immediately cut three hundred thousand dollars from the students. If you took that from the salary line, you'd break even. And then we would have this issue here, that we would still deal with, and we would've dealt with it accordingly.
What I'm not understanding is where you, right now, we have a hundred and forty thousand dollar underrun in all the other accounts that are not related to special ed. Our substitutes line is over. You have to take that into consideration when you're talking about the salary line going down. You're just looking at this one account, or these three accounts, that are underrun by a total of three hundred thousand, but there are budgetary overruns as well, and that's in normal, that's in normal budget management. We are within a hundred and forty thousand, not three hundred thousand. So, you keep saying that there's this three hundred thousand dollars in savings every year, I'm telling you, it's a hundred and forty.
I don't understand, because he just spit out the numbers, a hundred and sixty thousand, thirty-five thousand, sixty-five thousand.
It's three hundred and sixty thousand, it's three hundred and sixty-seven thousand that were underrunning, but there are other accounts added up together that are overrunning by another two hundred thousand.
Okay, that's great.
Within every other, so, so we're netting out to a hundred and forty thousand dollar savings, not three hundred thousand.
So then there's something wrong with the budgeting process.
What is wrong with the budgeting process?
I'll, I'll give you an example. You have over one hundred lines in your budget that are overrun, one hundred. That tells me those lines were not budgeted properly. Ten, twelve, fifteen, depending on how many lines you have. You have over a hundred that are overrun, budget lines that are overrun. And I think that's excessive. That tells me that the original budgeting wasn't as precise as it should've been.
We have never once had to freeze accounts to cover that.
That's not my point. My point is, building a good budget that everyone can rely on and knows works. And if you have a hundred lines where you're overrun, jeez, that's not good. That's not good.
But it's understandable if you know how a school district runs.
We appreciate the underrun on the other areas, but we would rather everything be more accurate. So that it wouldn't be--
Within forty-seven million dollar budget, to be more accurate than within a hundred and forty thousand dollars, is what you're asking.
You're talking about overall, we're looking at it more line-by-line. Again, you're taking, you, the, the way we've seen it, or I've seen it personally, is that money's been taken away from the kids. You have, you've never taken a dime away from this, what I call salaries, which includes benefits. It includes substitutes. In my, in my world, that's all of that administrative type of stuff. And there, you always have additional money. Two years ago, it was something like eight hundred thousand dollars. You know, half a million dollars was cut two years ago, and you still had money to put away into an non-lapsing fund. So, I mean, it, it, obviously, there's, there's, there's some sort of, you know, I, I understand you have to budget to a hundred percent, but you'd never hit a hundred percent. Whereas everywhere else, it doesn't seem like you are budgeting to a hundred percent. We want, we just want the numbers to be more accurate. The numbers could be, I, in the end, the overall budget could be forty-seven million. It's just, it, the, right now, the numbers to us aren't making sense, is how you got to this, how you got to that, because clearly, they don't tie to what historically has occurred. So we're just trying to get the answers of, it's, like, how are you getting to this number now, rather than just slapping the percentage on the current, but, again, the, the previous budget.
So the pages that we provided you, that details every single expense that we have, wasn't what you were looking for?
It, again, now that we're caught up this far into the budget, but I'm talking, for, for future budgets, we do need a little bit more accuracy. Again, like Steve just pointed out, there was a hundred accounts that are overrun.
How does-- There, there aren't even a hundred accounts in the budget, Ricky. I mean, with due respect--
Then Steve, and then tell Steve--
Steve, Steve's take saying one account, and I can split it six ways, because I have center school, high school, middle school, and we're making trade-offs across those accounts all the time. You know, I need more supplies in the middle school, so where can we take that budget and underrun somewhere else? If you took that as five lines, two are gonna be over, two are gonna be under, but that's how you manage it. And we don't, you shouldn't be trying to manage us at that level of detail.
You're right.
That's our job.
Absolutely.
And, uh, in fact, we have a staff who does that for us. And so, so to, to sit here and say, you're a hundred lines over, I just sat here and counted it. We only have about thirty-five, forty lines in the entire budget.
Yeah, if you could give me some detail on some of those accounts, I might be able to give you some information right now, but--
Oh, we, we, if you take it at the detail, to be fair, to take it at, if you took it, school by school, budget line by budget line, there's probably two hundred lines of budget in there, or two hundred, three hundred lines of budgets, at a very detailed level. And yes, some of them are gonna be over, some of them are gonna be under. It's what you do when you manage a complex organization.
But, you know, but this whole thing, this is why we spent all this money to hire Bloom Shapiro, to switch everyone, use the same uniform chart of accounts, to use Bloom Shapiro to help us get there, to transition the schools onto the same system as the town, so we could have that level of detail, and we could look at that with confidence. Here's our budget by entity. You know, that's the way we do it on the town side. I've asked this board to make transfers in my budget about four times this year, totaling about forty thousand dollars on a twenty-million-dollar budget. You guys are moving money all over the place.
I'm not moving money all over the place. We move, we move money in certain accounts when we notice that there's a problem, but it, but it, an equal underrun in another account. This is not happening every single, this is not happening every single week.
If you look at the information that you provided to us, broken down by school, by the uniform chart of accounts, yeah, you are running overruns and underruns.
Yeah.
That's, yes.
This is a complex organization, this is not--
Yeah, but hundreds of them, over a hundred of them.
Yes.
We have thousands of students and hundreds of employees over four buildings. I, I, I don't really understand what the question is. This is not a simple, straightforward answer.
I guess the question for me is, why? If you were budgeting properly, I don't think you would have hundreds of--
Every number is a moving target. We have enrollment changes every single year, we have situations that we have to deal with. We have parents who just come up with legal issues that we have to deal with on the spot. Well, guess what, that means we overrun our legal issue, our legal line.
I don't disagree with you on that.
Well, we have underruns in this account, so we're gonna have to use some of those funds. This is normal budget management, and I don't understand, this is not the alarm that we're-- Had we not had this special education issue, we wouldn't be here tonight talking about this, and there wouldn't be an issue.
We'd still have two hundred thousand dollars of under run in the salary line.
And we'd have over runs in other lines.
Can I just add two things? One, to me, the over runs are a concern just because in Munis, that if we're using it properly, that, um, um, in putting purchase orders in, it shouldn't allow us, it should hit a limit. When, because Steve always gets concerned about it when we have overrun. How did Munis fail and then we were able to do that? Because that's how, what the purchase orders are supposed to do. So I know that that's why he's sensitive to the over runs. The other one is, um, what if, you're talking about that three hundred thousand and you might need it. What if you put in, it seems like it would be more transparent if you did put in an allowance, whatever the number would be, for under runs in salaries, and then you're saying, well, but we use that when we need it for special ed. Put it down at the bottom as a contingency, the least that's, that's what you're using it for.
So, 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 so let's, let's be very clear. So what we do is we build our budget based on the number of people we have, by name, by position. Here's the salary, we're gonna pay them. That's our salary budget. It's a very straightforward budget. It's P times Q.
Bob, how much of that forty-seven million is that line item? Do you remember?
Eighteen.
With salaries.
Eighteen to nineteen.
The teacher.
Teacher's nineteen.
Teacher is eighteen, six fifty-four, to be precise. And the salary line as a total is twenty-seven point seven million. So, um, and if I were to add in benefits that go with that salary line, Mark, that's another seven point three. So this, the people related stuff is thirty-four out of the total. With the bulk of the remainder either being the special ed costs and the bus, the bus contract. So, um, but just, Marsha, going back, so we budget a P times Q budget, and we put a negative contingency in there. It's a line item. It's a negative line item. You've seen it in the budget. It's the eighty to one hundred and twenty, depending on what we've had. So I agree with you as a budgeting concept, that's the way to do it. What we're debating here.
No, the eighty to one twenty is for teacher turnover. Your normal budget, when you have somebody that goes out, I think that's.
I understand, I understand the point. I understand.
It's two different things.
Well, they are, they're, they're two different things, but it's about salary under runs and how much negative you put in. That's the question. And so I think Glenn asked for an analysis. We'll do the analysis. And let's move on and, and have the discussion at that point. But, you know, we do have a complicated budget. It is, it is a challenging thing to deal with schools and school buildings and all the things that happen. So I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go dig in and also get you an analysis of the under runs and the over runs on, by line item, by school, so I can look at the hundred line items of overrun and what went on on each of those. And we'll, I'll give you a report on that. That's what I do for a living. So, uh, but we're not trying to do something crazy here.
Of course not. I mean, if you really want the information, you could come to one of our KEAP meetings or come to one of our Board of Ed meetings because we talk about this stuff all year round. And why we have, why we're under running some funds and over running some others, the issues that we have to deal with on the spot that we don't ever come to you guys with, with, with our hands out for. So I, I, I am a little bit defensive because it seems like there's, there's a lack of an understanding for how complex of an organization this is, and there's no want to understand some of those complexities.
Whoa, 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 whoa. No want. We ask a thousand questions, so don't say no want. We wanna understand. We wouldn't ask any questions if we didn't want to understand. So don't insult me with, you don't wanna understand. That was way out of line because we ask a lot of questions trying to understand. Ricky just asked a whole bunch of questions trying to understand. The easy way is, don't understand. Walk away. We're trying to understand, so don't throw that out there. Don't throw it out there. Don't. Don't. Just don't. Thank you.
Can I ask one question about this chart though? This got off topic there. If I'm, if I'm looking at this, um, under runs chart, just on the teachers, I'm assuming there's gonna be subs backing up all of those?
Yep.
So would it be safe to say that based on that, we'd have somewhere between seven and then counting the new ones, ten long-term subs for those positions?
Long-term subs kick in after forty days.
Okay, so, and so a leave of absence is determined.
Doesn't necessarily.
Okay, so then just, then.
It's probably the same sub during the term.
We'll call it up to ten subs then, on average.
Yeah, we have a lot of subs.
Okay.
We have a lot of subs. Um, by the way, you don't, this doesn't, by the way, the subs is actually, this is a subset of the total things that drive subs. Because, because there are people who are out on paid leave. This is just the unpaid leave. So you, before you get to paid, before you get to unpaid leave, you're using up vacation days, vacation days, sick days and, and personal time off.
Okay, so the number would even.
And maternity leave or whatever. So the, what drives subs is really complex.
Okay.
Bob, I just have kind of a quick question. You said we have a lot of subs. You know, do we have more subs than any other district in our DURG and so, so we have an average number of subs, like everyone, but it's a lot.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a better way to say it. There's a lot of subs, but it's not out of line. If anything, what we have is a bubble of maternity going on in our district, right? Because of the big turnover we had three and four years ago, and we've seen that. It's been a point of conversation. And it's a good thing. We love to have young, energetic teachers, and this happens to come with the territory. So, um, so we're, uh, we're dealing with that, and that's part of the things that drives our, our subs budget, which you probably will notice is up from maybe two or three years ago, and that's why.
But the sub budget is still under what it's, the actual has, has been.
That's right. We've been overrun because we've had been, we've had a lot more than expected this year.
But historically, you've been under budgeted.
Oh, yeah, under budgeted.
Poorer subs.
Yeah.
If you look at your last three years, your sub for, your budget for subs is well below what you actually spend. So that leads me to a question. Well, why wouldn't we put that number where we think it's actually gonna end up?
It's hard to call. That's the problem.
Generally offset by your salaries and having the salary under runs taken together.
Ken, I'm sorry, did you see long-term subs kick in after eighty or forty? I'm sorry, I wrote eighty, that's what I was questioning. Thank you.
Who, who sets that number? Is that a state set number? Or how does that work?
No, no, no. Who sets the rule on when that long-term rate goes in?
Because if we're getting a discount for long-term subs.
I think, I think that's state. I think that's state.
Two days.
Yeah. It's what they require. So the way the rules work is we're required to have certified teachers. And we're very good at that in Brookfield, by the way, in terms of making sure our teachers are all at the proper certification levels. But the state says if you can have a person in the building for over a period of time, they have to be certified. Somebody who's in for a day or two doesn't have to be certified, so that's what usually drives that.
Understood. Thank you.
Oh, so you can bring in a sub for two days that isn't certified?
Oh, we, we pay, we do that all the time.
Okay. And they make a higher rate than the certified subs that come in for a long-term?
No, 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 no. The certified rate goes way. The, no, long-term subs make a higher rate.
But less than, but less than what they did higher.
So using a service, we're able.
They're lower, the service is lower than what we would pay individually, but it's higher than your, what, day-to-day subs. What's the average rate for a day-to-day subs?
Eighty-eight dollars sixty-six on the, uh, Paris, right?
So I, I think if I heard you correctly, the ESS company has a wider base of possible candidates, and they can negotiate a better rate for our long-term subs than we can do on our own.
Yes.
Okay.
I also think ESS offers an option for benefits.
They do, yeah.
So there are other benefits to being part of the ESS.
Well, they can get retirement and all of those things, right?
Which is why they can attract them.
Yeah. Makes sense. That makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
So. Ken, I have a quick question. So I know there's an exercise. Marsha actually spent a lot of time recreating your budget to actual, using a, a brand-new template that she created. So basically, I would imagine you provided the town with all of your actual spend for the year of two thousand eighteen, nineteen. Is that correct?
Um, I think that's out of Munis, yeah.
Add it, so you just pulled it out of Munis, and Marsha recreated your budget and did some analysis. And that's where these hundred lines were evident. Now, do you think what this board is asking for is something that's a genuine line-by-line, granular level analysis of your budget? Do you think Marsha's solution is something that your board would be interested in adopting? Because there is absolutely merit to all of the analysis that's come out of that exercise. I think you should open up the possibility to adopting that. Because clearly, what you're delivering to the board is not what they're asking for. So I think that would be an easy approach to leverage the work that she's done. I think that would be an opportunity.
Yeah. So, so, so to, to be very open and frank.
Yeah, let's, let's.
The minute Marsha pre-created that, what did I do? I went over and visited with Marsha and Ken and said, let's adopt this. And as a day-to-day operation, there are some flaws with it. I mean, I.
We have to say that you guys, Ken and Joan, and you guys did a phenomenal job at populating that data in a very short period of time.
Yeah, there's still one, so, so, to, to, John, to, to continue, there's a lot of work to be done. It's new, right? We're working through, for example, um, the first analysis that was done was let's compare two thousand eighteen to the current twenty, twenty, twenty-one budget. And that's a two-year bridge that had never been done before. And there's a lot of stuff that you have to deal with when you're going and doing that. Like, for example, we made a decision to, uh, reduce three teachers running special ed and replace them with two administrators doing special ed. We saved money by doing it, but the line items in the school kinda got all wacky when you do that. So we have a lot of kind of work to do to make that really operational.
Yeah, I'm not saying.
But we love the struc, but we love the structure.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I thank Marsha for that work and Ken for that work because they both worked really hard on doing that. And I think as we move forward, that will be a great basis for doing our budgets. So I just, because I, I'm a believer in that level of granularity.
Yeah, because to your point, you know, when we looked at it, it looked like, based on the information you gave us, that you added a number of people in the budget during the year, but what you're saying is some of those title teams.
Some of them, no, or some of them may, may have been which contract they're on. They're an administrator contract instead of a teacher contract. So there's a lot of that work that's going on. The Kentsman, actually, in, in addition to trying to deal with all the other things he's trying to deal with right now, he's been trying to work through that format with Marsha to try and get those deltas in there so that we can make it a more useful format. So.
Yeah, because when you see numbers bump up from year to year.
They don't make sense. I looked at them and said, some of them didn't make sense. And the minute I asked the question, there was like, oh, well, that's something we changed. You know, we funded it differently and, you know, from two years ago.
Yeah. He goes, you know, like, you got the new administrators in special ed, three ABA Paris, which is the grant that you use the money all in the first year and then not in the second year, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
And two clerical positions in special ed and a director of instruction. So those look like additions to the staff that you can't really see in the budget numbers.
Yeah, and every one of those had a business case that actually saved us money. So they, the problem is in the, the problem is with the format. It looks like that's an increasing line.
Well, that's why you have these discussions.
But it was a good, but it was a good story, actually.
That's why you have these discussions, so everybody understands what you're doing.
Yeah, so we actually sat with Marsha and, and Ken and said, let's take each of those line items, add a column for bucket, bucketing changes so that we can see that explicitly. And so that the analysis then makes a lot more sense. And we're, they're working on that. It's also, it ties out to Munis, but it doesn't tie out to the audited numbers just because of, and they're not major changes, but that had to be cleaned up. And there was, and there was a couple of things on how do the investments work when we did make investments, so we can make sense out of that. So that format, John, is great, right? It just needs some work.
Right. At the end of the day, you want your budget to tell a story.
I'm a believer, the budgets tell stories.
I think the presentation is great. The numbers are, you know, are not as solid as I think this board is looking for. So I think this template or something along those lines will allow you to tell the story and say, hey, year after year, yeah, we're under here. Our pencil budget, we're way over here, you know. I think that granular level of detail and analysis will be at your fingertips if you have something that's maybe built from the ground up, which is what Marsha's created. So I really honestly implore you guys to adopt that at some point.
And to your point, John, just a little further, and to your point, Bob, the first year you do this, it's gonna look ugly. It's gonna look ugly. But if we can continue with this format, as we, we continually try to do is get it finer and clearer and more transparent. Because I honestly believe if every member of this board said, this is the right budget, please support it. We had six yeses on this budget. It's much easier to get passed with the voters. And that's our goal, to get all three members of the Board of Selectmen, which we didn't get, and all six members of the Board of Finances to all say, this is the number. That's where we wanna get, and that's why we ask the questions.
Okay. So if you wanna move on to the two thousand twenty-one budget.
We have a couple of things we want to talk about. Oh, I left my notes. I'm just tangled in the wires. These are, we've, we've presented once already, so this isn't a new presentation. This is a follow-up. I just, more than anything.
Yeah, I'll take one. Okay, so, um, there isn't much to, there's a few things that we can update you on tonight. The full presentation was obviously last month. Following that presentation and the eight hundred thousand dollar reduction, some questions were asked. Actually, a lot of questions were asked, and we provided those. So you should have the answers to those questions available for your reference. We will obviously continue to collaborate on those questions, answer anything. Again, we've been working really hard to get you the answers that you need. So hopefully, that pattern will continue. Based on the eight hundred thousand dollar plus cut that we received, the board is still in the process of trying to figure out where that's going to come from. We've tasked our superintendent, Dr. Burrell, to come back with some suggestions. And the board will convene next week to go through those and deliberate on some of that. That's gonna be March sixteenth, next Wednesday. Okay, so the updates that we need to provide to you tonight, firming up on some of those estimates, some of those numbers we have updated numbers on that we can provide for you. We are going to be able to talk about the special education outplacement, um, how that will affect next year, and the impact of the current year spending freeze, but also our historical spending freezes as well. And we're still working with our controller to create that spreadsheet with that two-year come care, hopefully tying that to audit numbers and incorporate categorization changes and investments. And we have an explanation for the resulting growth rates. So if you take a look at the.
The, the next two, the next two charts are not on the screen, so I apologize for those who might be watching this on TV.
You have a printout, just maybe, so Bob created these.
They, they all have a printout.
They're really, really fantastic. So, I think. So if you, Bob, would you mind taking them through? Or actually, sorry, Ken, you have the first, the first updated estimates for the operating budget. Room for you up here if you want. Here, I have it.
She has it.
Yeah, the estimate. So the first one is pension costs, so we're actually gonna have to increase that in our budget. We originally put in the same number as we had last year because we didn't have the new valuation report. And that valuation report shows that we have to increase by twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. Additionally, we had an employee who recently became eligible for pension, and that person chose the new four oh one A plan, which has an employer match. So thirty-nine hundred and forty dollars represents the five percent of that person's salary that we have to match. So that has to be added in. Health services grant, I revised that number based on the state formula and based on the fact that the, the grant is paid next year, but it's based on this year's expenditures. And since the needs at St. Joseph's School have changed, we have to have a full-time nurse at that school for the rest of the year. Instead of the halftime that we had traditionally. instead of the halftime that we traditionally had. So our costs are going up for that, and we'll get an increased grant for that, so we will adjust for that. Adult education tuition, I was able to get a firm tuition number from Danbury, so that number will change, as will the adult education grant. I was able to get the formula from the state and make that calculation. Health benefits, we were recently advised that our increase would be 6.5% and not the 9.5% that we were originally anticipating. So that saves us $167,000, which could change based on what our actual population is next year with turnover.
We have the same problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, another one of those unintended consequences as we hire, bring in young teachers who have families.
They're opting for family.
They're opting for family coverage instead of individual coverage. So more and more, that's another one of those unintended consequences.
And there's a small adjustment to FICA because the amount of money deducted pre-tax from our employees for health benefits affects their social security. Sewer, we obtained actual data from the WPCA, so we are making that change. And then workers' comp, we got the renewal rates from Karma, so we can update that number. What's that?
Water.
Yeah.
What is that total?
Yeah.
Does anybody know?
142,924.
142,924.
24.
I should have known we'd keep doing that one. Is that you're doing? Thank you.
Plus $5,000 for the audit.
Well, I wasn't listening.
Which you've already discussed.
Oh, yeah, threat, the audit should be added to that, 147?
That's a 22.
That's a?
That goes up or down?
Down. Another 147.
Minus another 5. What about the adult education tuition? You said that you have updated number, but I don't see it.
It went up 900.
Oh, that was 900?
Yep.
Oh, yep, sorry. I was doing math at the time. Okay.
The next is, the next chart that you have is the summary of the special education placement cost. If you take a look, and Bob, feel free to jump in.
You want me to pitch it?
Yeah, this graph Bob created was really great. So if you want to walk them through it, that would be helpful.
So the structure of the chart, just so you do it, the student numbers are on the exact same student numbers that Ken had shown, in the chart that we prepared on the special ed presentation. I sorted them in a different way, right? And I sorted them into some groupings. The top grouping is those students whose services stopped this year. There were six of them that stopped this year. The second grouping is the ones that are on this year but stopped next year. And the two big bottom boxes are the ones who are continuing from this year to next year. So you have every single student that we know about is listed there with their this-year costs and last year, oh, I'm sorry, this-year budget, this-year actuals, and next-year costs. Over on the right, you see an analysis that I pulled together. We started this year's budget with 26. We've had, I'm looking over your shoulder, we had 15 adds and six where the students ended. You can see the dollars that went with those. It was $832,000 in terms of the new students that came in and 203 for the ones who left. There were some changes in either rate or service because, remember, each of these students, there's the rate that the program that they're going to might change, but they also might have slight ups and downs in the services that they're getting. So the net of those was about $49,000 to the good for us this year. And there was one bucketing change for how we handle the American International School. But that's, that's the exposure we've been talking about this year, $505,000 for this, you know, the tuition line. For next year, we don't know how many students we're going to have show up in town. I mean, that's actually one of the hard, another one of those hard things to budget. So we actually do that with a contingency, and that contingency level is $294,000 at this point. It originally was a nice round number, to be frank, but with all the things that have changed in the last weeks, we've plussed and minused it and ended up with a nine, it was $390,000 originally. The, and then, but we do know there's seven kids whose service will end, and that saves us $200,000 year to year, and then some rate changes. And the rate changes are also hard because the schools haven't declared their rates yet for next year. They'll do that in the spring. So Ken has assumed 4% across the board on all that, which has been consistent with our prior experience. So these should tie out to the other chart.
Would it be more transparent? This is the first year that looks like that you've got a contingency in there. But again, when we were talking about, to Ricky's point about the good numbers, if you showed the allowance, put the $300,000 of a contingency for, or whatever the number's going to be, for our savings, and then instead of having this contingency in this line and possibly contingencies in other lines, put it all in one line as a contingency. Just so that when the board's looking at the budget and they're scrapping the budget, they cut $64,000 from students, they might have thought, "Well, maybe we could cut $64,000 from the contingency," and just to be able to see.
This isn't a contingency. It's called a contingency because we don't know how many students. We know there's students going to show up. So would you cut money out of this line?
But I would put it in.
Seriously, would you cut money out of this line? $300,000 to me is, 300, it isn't a separate line.
We wouldn't say it till tonight, I don't think.
It's not yours to see, it's ours to see.
But that's what I'm saying, we just put it in a contingency so that even board members can see, "Oh, we've got that money there." That's all I'm saying, to me, it seems more transparent.
So then let's go the reverse of that, Bob. Beginning of the year, you put 26 students in, 20 showed up at the beginning of the year. If nobody moved into town, you know how you're saying you put the contingency in, but the reverse of that is, had you not had 12 students come to town, you'd have been $330,000 ahead on that line item. It just flopped on you, and it didn't, was nothing you did, and it flopped. So the reverse of your logic, adding that $300,000. You had $300,000 on the front end of this year, September. When September started, you had $300,000 ahead on that budget line. Yes or no?
Not this year. I understand your point, Glenn. I understand your point.
Coming in and leaving at the same time.
Let's also talk like how you walked through this, like when you loaded it. Right now, you're looking at $2.1 million this year on the overspend. That's what we're trying to catch up to. But some of these students weren't there all full year, and you're only adding 200 or 300,000 to get to 2.4 next year. So where is the disconnect? Is next year's only going to cost us $300,000 more on your estimate of new students? Because if this year's numbers at 2.2 are correct and fully loaded, how do we get to partial years? Because Ken and you all said some of these students are partial years to get us to the 2.2 number. How is 2.4 a real number for next year?
We've actually done a bottom, that we have students who've left. That's why I did this analysis, Glenn. So there's a person, student by student, you'll see some.
Right, I see all of it. I can read it.
You see some students that go up dramatically year to year. That's your part, year to full year students. You've got other students that have come down from a big number to zero.
Absolutely, you're still running to one.
We wanted to be transparent.
Yeah.
And make sure we told you exactly what's in this budget. And I'm trying not to generalize it into the how could it go up or down, and what are the numbers? I wanted to show you the actual numbers. So that's what we did.
No, maybe I'm missing something, because what's the 294 that we just talked about? That's not a true number.
That's a, no, that's a placeholder for unknown students, that's correct.
Right, so we're not talking true to true. That's what I'm trying to say. I mean, I see what you're doing, but it's not true to true.
That's why I put a subtotal there. I mean, to be fair.
Okay.
I mean, I purposely put a subtotal at the total of the known students so that we wouldn't be talking around each other.
Right, which is, which again is we're not, because we're talking the 2.1 this year. I see what you're saying, but we're still talking 2.1 at the end of this year. We don't know who's dropping out next year according to this, because you only have this year's ins and outs, right?
No, 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 no.
Where?
Look at the second box. Second box are the ones that are dropping.
Some of others could move out of town in theory.
In theory.
Which usually doesn't happen, I understand.
We had six this year. You know, so actually, the way Ken came up with.
You have 18 new, right? We have 12 net new.
So where is?
If you look at, if you look at the chart, the ones that have the zero in the first column are all news. They, there was a lot of news, and there was a lot of, a lot of the people that were in the budget that left.
Can I ask the, probably a simple, totally, I think it's a simple question, I just don't know the answer. If I looked at student 38, because I want to use the highest-cost student.
By the way, I rank ordered them largest to smallest because I figured that would be exactly how you'd look at it.
Right. That 152, now we get money back from the state if it's over four and a half times our rate, so I'm going to call that $70,000. Is that 152 what we're paying? So that kid actually costs $300,000?
No, no, this is, no, no, this is the actual, this is our, this does not, is not netted for any money back from the state.
Okay. So the money we're getting back from the state, you have.
It's in a separate one. It's in a separate one.
That's all captured.
That's correct. And the other thing that's not in this, just to be fair, it doesn't include the transportation, because there's a special ed transportation, which is sometimes as big as the tuition. So, and we budget that as a separate line as well.
I just wanted to make sure all of that was captured in that.
No, absolutely.
Because I've been unclear as to.
We try not to, we try not to net it because we've been accused in years past. I was actually, when I was on this board, I was one of the ones banging around on the Board of Ed saying, "But you're just showing us the net numbers, show us the gross numbers, I want to see them." And so I've always been a believer. I'm a believer in showing you the gross numbers, so.
With kindergarten registrations.
It did just go, look in the details that were provided, it doesn't say contingency. It says five students at $78,000. So then my question, follow-up question would be, is there contingency in transportation as well?
No, because that, that number fluctuates a lot more because we do ride sharing, and so it really depends on each unique student's.
But if you had added a contingency.
How did you handle? You, you follow this whole structure, right? So they, so the answer, the answer to your question is, we took the same basic model, and it's how we budgeted the transportation as well.
So how much contingency in transportation?
But Ken would have to go back and look that up.
Can we just do one example? So we have, let's say, student 38. So next year, we're anticipating the cost for that student is 152, 152?
For tuition.
Yeah, all-in cost.
No, that's tuition.
No, tuition, sorry, yeah.
For tuition.
That's not transportation.
It's not transportation.
The first 70 is on us, right?
And also 25% of anything above that, because it's really, we're reimbursed at about 75%, but it's probably going to be less than that.
So our net cost is about $54,000.
No.
Over and above the 70.
Above the 70.
Okay.
Plus the cost, plus the cost, plus 25% of the cost of the transportation.
Right.
Because, well, that'll, takes the 150 up even higher, right? So we'll get 75% of that. So those very expensive students is where you get help. The ones that kill you are the ones that are 60s to $5,000. Because, you know, your average cost for students in the 15 and range and, you know, you're, you know, that's a lot of money if you got a lot of those.
It's sort of an unknown number too, because it's not always, we don't know if it's 75 or 72. It's really determined by how much money the state has. It's like just a straight funded fund. So whatever they have, and they have to divvy it up between all the students, it could be 70. So they determine that, like, at the very end, "Well, we can give you 70%." So it's usually around 70, 72%, but it's sort of an unknown.
And one time I.
Are you all aware of the unknowns dealing with the state and appreciate your troubles with that?
And correct me if I'm wrong, I know in previous meetings you had said that sometimes the figure of what each student class can fluctuate down or up based on if they get back into the, you know, district or they need another level. So these, it's, these are just guestimates, but they're fluctuating.
Yeah, these, the.
The program needs to change based on their, depending on their own needs.
Okay.
During the year, they could be four or less speech services or.
Understood. Got it. Carry it over. Thank you.
So there's a contingency in salaries. There's a contingency in special ed. There's a contingency in transportation for special ed. Are there any other contingencies?
Can you explain the contingency for salaries?
We've talked about, about the turnovers and stuff that.
There's some contingency in salary.
I think we budget conservatively for that.
Well, so that, now we're semantics. It's semantics, right.
It's a question of how much risk you want to take against your known salary line. That's why it's a contingency.
So there's an assessment of risk there. There's an assessment of risk in tuition for special ed. There's an assessment of risk in transportation for special ed. Are there any others?
I think you're going to have to ask it again.
No, it was heard.
Right. And the question was, are there other line items in the budget that you would take a certain risk on and will add into the budget? Other than teacher turnover and special ed costs.
And transportation.
And transportation, which is special education's cost, so.
Could you look into that in the next day or two and get back to us, and we have that? I did, I don't know if you answered it.
Yes, you will.
I'm ready.
Thank you.
With the kindergarten screenings, will you have a better identification? Will you know any more numbers of incoming special ed students from a result of, I mean, some of them sure in the preschool program?
Yeah, we have an idea, like, from the preschool numbers, and we usually call around to the area preschools to get an idea for, and that just helps us with kindergarten enrollment in general.
Right, yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, most, most of the kids are, some of them can be identified that early, but some of them, you know, they are with us for a long time, and it's sort of as they develop.
Do we have any feel for, like, last year's, the amount of kids coming into kindergarten? Any feels too early?
No, we do. It's, those numbers from Malone and McBroom have been highly inaccurate.
Yes. Okay.
It frustrated us to no end, but yes.
Are other districts feeling the same, noticing the same thing that the?
No, I feel not to the, I don't, personally, I don't think to the extent that we are. I do talk to other board chairs, and I don't think that they quite have the fluctuations that we do through the year.
Is there a company?
They're really the only ones that kind of do this stuff.
They just can't get us right.
Yeah, I think, I, I don't know, we, we talked about this, and why their numbers would be inaccurate, whether it's, you know, housing developments in town, or if it's just general.
Yeah, but they got to look at, they can look, they do.
They do, they look at birth rates, and, yeah, so, I don't know.
And so you asked them that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's only two people who do this.
Yeah.
And Malone and McBroom is the better of the two.
Highly volatile.
And it's very volatile.
We had them come back to us. They gave their report at one meeting, we were highly dissatisfied. We had them do even deeper and do deeper analysis and come back. And, yeah, I mean, we were visibly displeased with how inaccurate their projections are.
I bet if we tasked Marcia with it, if she had any spare time, she'd get with Vin and Stu or two.
No.
You're just that good.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for approaching them with the questions.
Yeah, yeah. Then the last chart that you guys have are the impact of the spending freezes on the following year's budget. So I know that many of the questions that the Board of Selectmen had asked dealt with, well, on almost all of them were, "Why is this so much higher than your actuals last year?" And that's because every year, we have been on a budget freeze. So, and when we return with a budget for the next year, we don't typically try to recoup and mend the things that we had lost the previous year, but we try to just get back on track. So that's what we have historically done, but that does lead to, if you're just looking at things line item by line item, those large jumps there.
Yeah, so our budget this year, had you done it against the current year budget, we would have actually been down year to year, but it looks like we're up 11% because we're going off of a budget that had been frozen by, as much as we had frozen it. And this is like, I went back and looked at it today. We have done a discretionary budget freeze for four of the last five years. And the last three have been because we've had special education, things we've been chasing. And I'll tell you, the special ed, we've talked about it earlier. If we could help get the state to get us to a better way to fund special ed so that it doesn't become an impact to our districts, everything would be able, all the discussions we've had tonight would have been much more easier to deal with, I think. But we've been fighting this uphill every year. But it shows up in these lines. But it shows up in these lines especially, because the, I'd say half of these lines, maybe two-thirds of these lines, are things that directly affect the supplies and materials that are in the classrooms. There's some that are building maintenance and, you know, building supplies and cleaning supplies and things like that. But a lot of this stuff is stuff that goes right to the kids. And we've been squeezing it year in and year out. And John, you get into a discussion with John Verrill on it. He's exhausted from constant squeeze on these lines. But it does affect how you look at a budget. And so I just want, I did this chart because I just needed to have context of it, and I wanted you all to see that.
I know how he feels.
Yeah, I understand.
Say one thing so that it don't look like it's always a firm logic, that when I compare the, all the questions that you answered with freeze, when you put the numbers down, they do add up to about this amount of.
Yeah, that would make sense.
It does, it does make sense.
1819, special ed cost exposure. Can you remind me about that one? Like, it's not, that, that's just not clicking for some reason. Do you remember the amount?
I don't remember the amount off the top of my head.
I don't think you came to us for appropriation.
Yeah, the appropriation we came to you with 1718.
Seven, yeah, that was.
Right, right.
That was a tough.
That was a big one.
Last year, we had it, and we had to squeeze these things inside a budget, but we didn't have to come to the Board of Finance for a month. I'll, I'll lay those numbers out for you if you'd like.
Okay.
And I, I will just say, in, in speaking with other districts, they also have special education cost overage issues, sometimes year after year. They are usually able to solve that with smaller freezes and their non-lapsing accounts. So they're not usually having to go to their Board of Finance for additional funds occasionally, but not as.
How do you guys get around if you need to initiate a freeze, and you're hitting a line item like office supplies? Or forms imprinting, you know, just small dollar amounts? And field trips? So I guess out of those three that I selected, field trips, like, how do you find savings and you just?
Just don't spend.
Don't do it.
But didn't you send some people to Munis training for about $6,000? And you still did that this year, right?
Yeah, I think, I think what Marc's talking about is that your, your business office is sending, I think, two people to a Munis conference before. It's, it's not happening.
Oh, you, because I didn't see, I don't see that.
Because I, that's right. I don't want to get into it now, but I think I did see a check paid as a deposit. Hopefully, we got that back. What I'm saying is, when I see line items like field trips, which are student-based, too, and these are areas that you're looking, and then I see conferences and perhaps excessive breakfasts for PD days, that really irritates.
Well, I, I, I will speak to that particular point, because this goes into, again, understanding the complexity of a school district. That particular expense, we.
Which expense, breakfast?
The expense of breakfast.
Listen, I have no problem with that.
No, I know, I'm just, I know.
I always see bagels from Bagel Man for $30, but I see $400 for one breakfast.
Right.
TSO, P-Day.
I know, but because you used the word irritated, I do want to just.
Yeah.
Help maybe.
Well, that's where I come from.
Help maybe like.
I have no.
So professional development is incredibly expensive.
Sure.
We, Waterbury was putting on a particular professional development event, and they allowed us to attend for free if we supplied the breakfast. So what would have cost us thousands of dollars, maybe even more, cost us more.
Well, perhaps that question would have been better offline. But what I'm saying is, I appreciate the, the spending freezes, and I know there's always a story behind all of these cuts. And it's just, you know, from where I stand, what I see are the actual disbursements. And when I see the description saying a Munis conference, I'm saying, gosh, we'll be really, really managing our budget as much as you're purporting to me. I don't see that. So I understand there's always an explanation behind the scenes. But that's, I think that kind of goes with the whole narrative of what this board was asking.
Right, no, I, I, I see how that, how that looks.
Yeah.
But just, we ask, we're asking the questions, and.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah. So, are there any other questions? We will have more answers for you guys after our meeting.
I do have one more, probably, simple question. The line farthest to the right, I don't really want to call it a column, because it's just two items out there hanging in the breeze.
They were comments.
Yeah, so that just, when I just read the comment, I'm taking that to the opinion of, like, the textbooks, $12,000 of that, 232 is because we have some extra enrollment in the schools?
So, so, so our budget had three additional sections at, at the center school.
Yeah.
Right, so, and when you put in new sections, you need to have tech.
So I'm at, I'm.
Yeah, that's all I had. And it's furniture, and it's classroom supplies, so. And then I just, I said, I can't show you this chart without that. That, that level of detail is in the book we gave you. I actually pulled those out of Ken's spreadsheet that he provides to us when we review the budget, so.
Thank you.
But that's exactly what that was, was the three new classes.
Can I get into some other items that, because I'm, I'm catching up. I've received, like, 13 spreadsheets, and I was combing through them in the last week. On the, the salaries detail, not to get into salary specifically, but I saw these positions listed as curriculum specialists. And then there's a tab of curriculum leaders. What are the differences between the two?
I believe, because John was here to answer.
Me, too.
Which are the names?
I think somewhere at the high school, somewhere at the middle school. I think they differentiate, some are half particular.
So we've titled, Ricky, one other thing. You probably see three curriculum leaders at the high school. And that's a titling change that.
Those are the specialists.
Those are the curriculum specialists. Those are your department chairs.
Okay.
So that's, and what we've gone is from five to three over the last couple of years. We've taken, we've taken social studies and English and made it humanities. We've taken science and math and made it STEM. And then the third one is world language and, and.
K-12.
K-12, T, English is a second language.
Okay.
So we have three, call them department heads, right? That, we've called them curriculum specialists, right? The, the curriculum teams down at the other schools, we actually have a coordinator in each, in each school. A person at each school is actually helping write curriculums.
So those, those teachers just get an additional stipend then?
Yeah, and they're just a stipend.
Okay.
And they're not, they're not writing curriculum. They're supporting the curriculum teachers. We have one for.
Right, all the teachers are writing.
One for math and one for DOA at the elementaries.
And, and they're stipend.
So then, are these, so these department heads then, like, are STEM, they're not, are they teachers? They don't teach at all?
They don't.
They don't.
Well, one's covering partially.
Yeah, so.
One is, yeah, but.
So, so Ricky, what we used to have were the department heads. When my kids were going through the school, the department heads might teach one or two classes. So Dr. Zapienza used to teach two history classes. And then the rest was doing evaluations and, and actually coordinating the department. What we did was we, but just one department, we jammed them together. So instead of having, you know, like, five teachers there, or six teachers they're looking over, they now have double that, right? Because they're looking over two departments, they got a lot more evaluations to do. So we made the decision that it was a better business decision to have them focus on all of the evaluatory work that an administrator would do, and also driving the curriculum work that needs to be done, right? Especially at the high school, you know? How are we going to improve our overall position? So they don't teach class, although Mr. Hill, I know, is covering a class because we're down a math teacher, and I think.
So that saves you guys from having to get a sub in that position.
Yeah, that's right. So we've used them in spot ways to, to help do some things.
Is it typical for them to backfill instead of subs?
We would prefer that they don't.
I think they do occasionally, but this was a case where we just.
High-level class.
Yeah, this was like a calculus B.C. class. But you don't have many people who can go to handle that class for any length of time. But Mr. Hill knows that one inside out, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So that's that note here.
If I could, I mean, I don't want to beat a dead horse here. Things that bother me are other or miscellaneous, those add up. And a perfect example in your, your proposed 2021 operating budget, that's very detailed and has things like fuel and electricity and oil heat. And then I got other supplies for $152,000. Go down a few more lines, and you got other equipment for $358,000. I'm not saying you don't need them.
Yeah.
That's a big chunk of money to just say it's other, when you have some items that are $6,000 for propane.
So that, if you look at the next section, that should give you another layer of detail. And then if you want even more than that, that's where we got into the granular detail with the Excel sheets that you requested.
Because I think my booklet, because I've got duplicates of that for a few pages after, and then I quickly.
It's just because, for, for our own purposes, we, we like to see sort of one level, and then a deeper level, and then a deeper level. So that's how our budget binder is. But, you know, I, if you wanted to see more, the Excel sheets should have everything.
The Excel sheets that we did for each school or each department has a separate tab for that account. And somewhere that will line up, those three schools will line up to.
Yes.
Yeah, it's in a lot of this department and schools.
Ricky? Dan?
Nope.
Brianna?
Nope.
Helen?
Are there any capital items that you wanted to highlight, or?
Well, the boys locker room is still, I don't know where the facilities committee stands on that. Do you have an update on? Because that was, that came in way over.
1.3, 1.4.
Oh, because it's in here for 6.5.
Yeah, it's a lot higher than that.
It was a lot higher than that, so I don't know.
We're going to go back to the board at the first meeting and discuss the old ones. We did go back to Techton and ask about the possibility of doing project phases so that some expenses could be in one year, and then the rest finished in the other year. Not surprisingly, they said that that would increase the cost, overall cost, because it'd be much more important twice than that.
Can we get a detailed breakdown of what they're proposing? We are doing for that 1.3 million dollars? Thank you.
You know what line item those?
That's going to be a major topic of discussion at our April, because it's for.
For that first Wednesday.
But 13 in April.
Which is after we're going to make a decision on it, so.
Right, that's, that's really hard.
And not, and nobody's fault.
Right, right, exactly.
Schedules cross there.
That's why we, three years to do a capital project, so.
If the facilities subcommittee meets before that, we.
You know, on this, we do need to start maintaining our buildings. And even if it does end up at 1.2 million, we've got 605,000 in this year. So you could almost consider it, you know, placeholder that we've agreed to do this, and then look at it next year, whatever the number becomes.
Funded over two years.
The reason, not to get into detail, but the, the outdoor lighting, I, the Board of Selectmen took that out because we have a program, we went out to bid, and we've got a company that comes in and is doing all the lighting in this building for no cost to the town. And they'll be paid at a 0% interest rate loan from Eversource at a discounted rate, and it'll just go to our bill. So in about three and a half years, we'll see a big drop in our electric bill. So I wanted to look at that before we committed to doing something like that. Is that a better way to do it? And actually, we should look at all the schools, too. At Whiskaneer and the high school, to have these companies come in, they redo all the lighting, and you could save a lot of money.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
We'd like to discuss that. Yeah.
Fire department has.
The, the fire department, that's the reason we took it out for the fire department. They've agreed, we've already done the analysis. They're going to do it over at the fire department.
I remember we had that done in the schools, I want to say, eight years ago. It's ancient history.
It is.
And so I'm thinking it's a great time, great time to go do that again.
And probably get them in there this summer so they're not bothering anybody,